Michael is not going to be able to be here today. So he has here the contract for the state for the one bridge. And L and M Contractors was the bear up low bidder. So he has the contract if everything is ready and okay for you guys to sign.
Okay, we'll take a look at the minutes. I guess we'll get down to that wire. Don, under the nursing home. The majority of Mr. Siebel's nursing homes are in Wisconsin.
His what?
The others of his nursing homes are in Wisconsin. Instead of Colorado.
I thought that too.
I guess I would also into that paragraph, I don't know that we're forming a nonprofit. I think we're forming a plan. Beginning operation at the nursing home. We're not doing a nonprofit.
Where are you?
Was that the motion?
Yes, because you were meeting with the, that is true. We said that because you were meeting with the group that had already formed. The group that had approached us, which is Lincoln Manor Incorporated. Because before he went on vacation, we talked about you setting up a meeting with them.
Yeah, I did have that meeting. But the committee we established, I didn't think was to form a nonprofit. I thought it was to develop a plan. To see where we proceed, how to proceed with this nursing home situation.
We could take that one sentence out.
I think that's what it says in the motion. To appoint Robert Siebel, Jennifer O'Hara, Steve Granzo, Kelly Larson, Doug Albin, Alja Wallace, and Don Hunter to a committee to start the process of forming, oh, I'm sorry. I see what you're saying, of forming a nonprofit.
I think we can just take out.
Just take out that section.
Start the process of forming a nonprofit for the nursing home.
To develop a plan is the committee's, I see what you're saying. It's in the motion.
It's not a nonprofit.
I agree with that, yes.
I mean, if you just take that one part of that sentence out, it goes right on.
Right, just go to develop a plan. Skip straight to that.
Okay, so from the word two, hallway, two.
No, to develop.
To develop, just skip down from committee to develop.
Yep, that's what I.
Yes, okay. I move to approve the minutes from August 20th, 2018 as corrected.
That was like, say, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye. I was approached by the fire department. They wanted me to put a enclosed carport in order to the fire station, that lot for storage. They're in paper, both themselves. That parking area over there.
Across the alley. What do you mean to the north?
I told them I didn't have a problem with it as long as they were paying for it. They were sure.
Who owns that lot?
We do.
We own it. They all own the building. They all own the building, the insurance for it.
It's, as I understand it, it's just an enclosed carport. I told them I would see if anybody had a objection to it. They have stuff stacked all over there.
Speaking of that, did we ever figure out, was our bid accepted for buying that lot to the, was it the mark of the recycling?
No.
To the south.
Oh, they sold it? So what happens, I thought that we already had things on that property line or?
We do.
Any, has there been any discussion or did anyone say? They have sold it before we gave them our price?
Well, yes, they sold it. When he called me on that Monday, he sold it.
Okay. What is this check for that you gave us a copy of?
That's my place sold waste.
Oh.
Oh, no, I take that back. The wife came in and paid the place sold waste. That was him dumping up a little bit.
A landfill till.
They're technically supposed to be dumping as they deliver. Yes, and not. And not charging, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Since we have five minutes, can you re-explain to me, and I'm sorry, I know I've asked you this before. Do we bill the city and they individually bill each residence on their utility bill, whether it's water or sewer or whatever? Or how do we collect that?
Okay, what they do is they bill every resident that has the.
A water service or whatever their utility.
And then at the end of the month, they tell us the count as to how many they have. And then we verify and make sure the check that comes in was.
So the city writes you a check every month? Three cities?
Four cities.
The fourth?
Barnard, Beverly, Silver.
Oh, Lincoln, I was thinking, okay.
So it's all four cities, and so whatever they bill out is what.
And does your office handle all that? What's our fee on the bill?
We charge a 25 cent for each fee.
For each separate bill?
For each hospital, so, yes. And then we charge out of something to bill for a year.
That's us separately, we do, but.
No, that is billed in the city bill as well. So when your city bill comes out, you're paying for.
A portion of it is your monthly pickup and a portion of it is your yearly fee. And we're charging 25 cents on the whole thing per bill?
25 cents for the hospital.
We have two bills here from Lincoln Clark Manor. An annual fire sprinkler inspection and backflow testing for $350 from prior automatic fire sprinkler. And let's see, Lincoln Building Supply, 400, or excuse me, $42.99 for an entry lock.
Did you see that letter?
No. So the bid wrote from L and M Contractors Incorporated. They're out of Great Bend, Kansas. What is the bridge number?
It's 87.
This is 87? They have it located as 1.3 miles north and 2.0 miles east of Vesper on road over Spelman Creek. 87 is the number, yeah, I'd say. Combination bid of items and construction engineering. Less $428,321 in federal funds will require county matching funds in the amount of $88,000. And the county remittance should be made on or before October 11th of this year. So his note says that it was $130,000 lower than the estimated bid. Did you see that?
Why else am I believing?
Lower, yeah. Can we approve the contract without sending payment? Or does it?
Yeah, you will upgrade the contract first and then we'll send the payment.
Okay, so. Okay. I move to approve the bid from contractor L and M. Out of Great Bend. For bridge OS 87, sorry.
I have a motion to approve the contract, L and M Contractors for OS 87, go ahead, second.
Say it.
Is there any further discussion? Not all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jeremy. You want to talk about gravel prices, I see, or?
Yeah, I didn't know if you were going to up them.
We talked about that last year. If we haven't discussed it with Michael yet, we sure can.
I guess my feeling is that I think we need to do it on the anniversary dates of those contracts since they're all in one set. And I think that's March 1st.
March 31st or 1st?
I think that would be the appropriate time because some of those contracts are due. And so we don't need to be issuing contract in January and turn around and issue another one in March. It's my feeling, but.
I just knew it was discussed that it would be for the 2019.
But I guess, that's my feeling. I, you know, and usually gravel doesn't start much before March 1st anyway. So I just think that it'd be easier for us to do contracts and set the price once and then we're done with it in, or a year at a time.
I just niggared a little budget, so.
Yeah, we kind of alluded last year to committing to, we didn't commit, but we. We kind of insinuated that we would.
Be doing better in the road department because we have cut down on the repair expenses. We purchase better equipment and we're not having these enormous repair bills coming through. We worked several years ago, so this freed up a little bit more money too.
Yep, okay. Well, that's all I was wondering.
Okay. We'll sure discuss it, Jeremy.
Thank you.
We'll get with you, let you know.
Jeremy.
Yeah, we did have.
Did you have a price in mind?
Just, we'd discuss that too.
Thank you.
We did have five bids on the bridges. The lowest, $399,000. Came in construction was $468,000. So Rees was $604,000. Bridges Inc. was $540,000. And AMN Co., Runon Sons, were $643,000. So there was quite a bit of difference in the bids. I'm sorry, Alexis, I got on your line, I think.
No, that's all right.
Don, did you have something you wanted to discuss?
I just wanted to figure out who you would like to interview for the producers' office.
Do we need to go into exact to discuss that?
Yes. Rob and me, and I forgot to bring the applications, so I took them out.
You forgot what?
I forgot to write the applications, so.
I have.
I have the list.
You don't have any ones to do?
No, no new ones.
I have everything in motion, going to executive session to discuss the applications.
How much time we need, Don?
It does not have a.
Let's go 15, darkened color.
I'd move one, 15 minutes. Discuss. Applications for human resources to protect the confidentiality of those applying.
Go ahead, second. I will second. Is there any further discussion?
Just to be clear, we're going to choose out of the, did we proceed seven or eight? Okay.
Eight.
Eight. Out of the eight, we will choose who is going to be interviewed.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then they would get benefits.
On top of that. I think that's reasonable.
Like next Tuesday after.
Because that leaves room for.
What now?
What were you guys thinking?
What's Tuesdays?
Tuesdays.
Because Monday is Labor Day.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I thought it would work, I guess, I'd have.
But they're, are they both, are they both leaving?
They're both from out of town.
And are they both leaving jobs, not, maybe not this?
I'm not sure. I can call and ask, and you know, you guys.
What?
You give me days and I will.
Are we coming in Friday for 100 months?
Yes.
Do you think that's too short in order to start?
Well, it might not be for Dawn if she's, if that person's kind of anxious.
So why don't I just give them Friday, Tuesday, and the following Monday?
No, we can't do it the following Monday. That's when we're going to work on the nursing home.
The 10th. So.
Why don't you just do it next week sometime? I guess we just have to come in.
We want to give them a later time, is what I'm saying, so that it gives them travel time. And if they have to leave, like a late, late afternoon, like 4:00 PM or something like that.
Okay, well, let me just see what they have available, and if you guys are.
I think we're pretty open.
Sure.
I am, I'll make it work to them.
Do you want a motion with names in it? How do you want to do that?
I don't.
I don't think.
We've selected two applicants to interview.
Well, it'd be a little early, but you want to go ahead with Bob?
They're ready.
These are, they're going to litter each other for half an hour.
That's okay, I've been ready. Good morning.
Morning.
I want to thank you for taking the time to meet me today. I know that you're all familiar with the ongoing issue of the Lincoln County of aging. And I'm optimistic that forward, we're working on making some, forward, making decisions this upcoming year. I'm concerned about the distribution on the funds to both the Lincoln Senior Center and the Silva Senior Center. My myself personal request that you think about disbursement of remaining funds directly to the Lincoln Senior Center and the Silva Senior Center as soon as possible because of the ongoing delays that we've had. This will allow the Lincoln County on aging to continue to spend down the reserve that is currently over $60,000. I've heard the audit is complete, and I know it is. I don't know if you've received it yet.
No, we have not.
Okay. The LCCOA, your remainder disbursement for 2018 was $28,500. The Lincoln Senior Center budget was $31,500, which would leave a balance of $16,500. And Lincoln's, or Silva Senior Center still has a balance of $12,000 coming for this year. So I would really hope and pray that you guys would make the decision to disperse those monies directly to both the centers. And that's what I have for you.
Well, my feeling was that once we saw an audit, we would think about dispersing the funds. But until we see an audit, I think we probably need to. Seems to be, that seems to be the problem. I think it is important that the senior center's disbursement be made. And I would hope it could be made as soon as we receive that audit. Until we receive that audit, I would not be in favor of dispersing any more money until I see what's actually going on with audits.
So where is the audit? I mean, I, you said you heard that it's.
Liz Winkler has it, she picked it up for all three. And so I don't know why she hasn't brought it up to you.
Who is she on the board?
You got a meeting tomorrow?
Yes, I do.
I imagine she's probably going to run it through you guys first, to my guess.
Yeah, I would say that.
Is she an officer?
Pardon me?
Is she an officer on the board?
She's the vice president.
Vice president.
I would say that they're going to run it through the board.
That's what I assumed, that after I heard it was there.
You know, they called for the audit, so.
Okay. But like I said, it's, we're still holding so much money in reserve on the LCCA that we need to get Sylvan and Lincoln paid. And I'm sure they're going to be, uh, discrepancy someplace. As far as dispersion of money, I'm praying that you guys disperse it directly and not give it to the LCCA.
So you really think that this commission would be wise to make three distributions from the tax collected each year? That we separate those and distribute that money individually to all three?
Mr. Wallace, I've checked with Manhattan, I've checked with Lincoln City, Mitchell County, Ottawa County, and they all dispersed the funds directly to the agency where the money goes to. And LCCAs, I've only been there for 13 months. My understanding was that the LCCA was supposed to help Sylvan and Lincoln when they needed extra funding. That's what their money was for. But the money that is there now is to take care of one senior. And we don't need that. We need to take care of all the seniors in Lincoln County, which is Sylvan, Barnard, Beverly. And that's, that's why my concern is, we pay them directly the money, let them handle their own funds. At the end of the year, when they have an audit, they will take care of their own audit. And I know they're, that they keep good records over there because I've seen them. I've been there the last several months over Sylvan. And I've been over here at the Lincoln Senior Center, and they do an outstanding job. So I think you're right. If you would just make three distributions, it'd make everything so much easier in the county and we wouldn't have all these problems.
I think they would prefer not to do it too.
So I'm going to appreciate you taking the time. And listen again.
You're still active on the board, correct? You're still a member?
Right now. So let's see what happens tomorrow.
I appreciate you.
Yeah, I think, I would assume that if they don't bring us the audit, we can require it to be delivered to us since we're funding them. But I would assume that once you guys have seen it, it will be given to us. It's been my intention, or my feeling all along, that once that audit is complete, it would be given to the commissioners to verify the funds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
I think it needs to be said that the commission should receive an official copy of the audit, not any sort of document produced in lieu of the actual audit. Not a, not a report made internally, in other words.
We would not be receiving it if we got a report.
Right.
You have to have the original document if you're going to receive the audit.
Well, given the history of the situation, I think that just needs to be clarified.
Do you think, do you think that we release though? Do you think that the LCCA will release that to you?
Surely will.
I would assume.
If they want any, if they want any more money from Mr. Don.
Actually, that audit is, is public information because any of the county audit, when the official county audit for '17 comes in, those will be available in the clerk's office for everyone to see if they want to see what the audit is. The commissioners receive a copy, a personal copy, and I think, and Don gets her personal copy. But there are copies available in the clerk's office for the public. That is public information, so with the LCCOA, whatever that is, organization, their audit will have to be public information. There should be more than one copy. I don't know whether there is or not, but if there isn't, they can require the accounting firm to produce more, more copies of that.
Yeah, we receive an actual binder when we get ours here.
I understand that you would have the actual, actual audit. You'd receive the original audit, and then we would have a copy. Is that what? The original audit will come in several copies. It will be bound and it will be signed. Yeah. Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay.
I assume, yes, it should, all the elements do, so.
I don't have ours to show you. I thought I did, but they give us one in an actual binder. And so that's how we receive it from the auditing firm. So it should come like this. And you're right, Don, it should be enough for everyone on the board. So, it should come like this, and you're right, Dawn, it should be enough for everyone on the board.
I can tell you that all the board members, LCCA board members that I've talked to would prefer not to distribute the funds. They would prefer that we do it, so...
And that's what we're praying for, that you guys take care of it. So, we'll stop this picking, we'll blame them on both areas.
When you gave us this breakdown of your suggestion for the distribution of 28,500 and 16,500 makes up the difference of what has not been paid to the budget approved for the Lincoln Senior Center of 31,500, correct? Because you said they received 15,000, so another 16,500 would make it 31-5.
Right, right.
Okay, and then, um, just out of curiosity, because I don't remember, I have it somewhere in here, but the 12,000 that was remainder, was that the whole budget? That was, when, when we were approached by the LCCA, they gave us all three budgets for this?
The last, the last two years for Sylvan, out of the 12,000 dollars.
So, when is the last time Sylvan received any distribution?
2016.
2016 is the last time they received anything?
No, no. They received money in 2017 because I made a motion to pay them, 2,600 dollars, and they got it. So...
2,600?
Those, the ones that I, payments that I brought in was 17, 2017, that was the payments.
That was all broken down according to like different purchases made, like the tables and the, is that what you're talking about?
Well, no, they were also given insurance money, they were given insurance money and utility money and...
Right, right.
I think one total around 10,000 or something.
But they weren't, what I'm getting at is, the split that you have is more about paying out the budget requests.
Yes.
Because the budget has continually been approved for Lincoln, and you're saying this amount would have finished paying off the budget approval that was done for Sylvan, the other senior center.
See, the LCCA was holding some of this money out of, out of both, the LCA and Sylvan Senior Center. And they hope, I don't know why, they haven't touched it. They have no, we have no responsibility of their money, really. Uh, so, my own personal feeling, that's my own personal feeling. Sylvan Senior Center should get their money out of their budget, out of their relevant money. Lincoln Senior Center should get their money out of relevant money. And the LCA, whatever's left, whatever their budget was, they'll get that. What they're worried about right now is if we can get enough money to pay the coordinator, that's what, that's what it is. So, we need to get past that. It's been like that for 13 years. So, if we get past that and pay the people the money that they need, that they have in their, in their budget and their relevant because that's what the, the seniors have been paying that money all these years. You know, and, and some senior center, I don't know how many seniors are over there, I haven't made that, but we go over there and there's 30 to 60 people all the time. So, they've got some seniors who are concerned about what's going to happen.
If you remember right, Bob, they submitted a letter that they would not accept any money from the LCCA. So, the fact that they haven't got any money
I got that.
Has to do with that letter that they said they would not accept any money.
So, then, thinking about next year, then, the disbursement, I think what we need to do is look at the three different budgets and decide what percentage of each budget we are going to fulfill. Because we did reduce the line item, uh, 2 mils in the year 2019 is equal to 117,000, I believe. I'm rounding it off there.
We reduced it a half a mil.
Well, we approved 75,000.
Right.
So, what I'm saying is for next, for next year's dispersal, what we need to do is look at those three budgets and decide on what percentage of that budget we are going to supply.
Yes.
They probably won't any of them give.
No, we can't afford to do 100% of all three of them, is what I'm saying.
I understand that.
Which they'll have to find some alternate, you know, fund. I know Sylvan's done plenty of fundraising, so...
That's true.
They'll have to find some alternate means of income.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's the county's responsibility to fund everything.
Correct. I agree.
I think they all have some reserves sitting there, so... I just don't think it's up to taxpayers to provide all the funding.
Mm-hmm. Agreed. Well, I'm glad you came in today because we hadn't discussed that in a long time. And I had wondered myself about where the audit was after...
I'll check and see, I have some, all three of them. I'm not concerned about the money. I'm concerned about the people. But they need the money to keep operating. And if one of the other places shuts down, maybe a truck, the senior, I don't have any place to go. You know, that's my concern.
That brings me to another subject, and I don't know how much information you have on this off the top of your head, but, um, what, do we have a standard process for, um, reclamation of back taxes as far as doing tax sales or things of that nature? Because there have been a lot of questions floating around about some of these buildings that are on the county, uh, tax claim, which would be delinquent taxes. And then, you know, how, how do we go about that? Because I think the last time we discussed this, there was going to be a sale. Do we have a tax sale then, since we've discussed it?
No, we haven't.
So, what is, do we have accounting policy or procedure or? I mean, where I come from, it's every three years regardless, but I don't know what, how much, how much jurisdiction do we have over that process?
Well, the, I think what it boils down to is being able to collect more than the cost of having the sale. If they get the advertising expenses and stuff and, and, you know, you can put them on the list, and they're, what, four years behind, they can come in and pay a year and continue.
And stay on air.
So, it's, you know, it sounds like a wonderful thing, but I can tell you, there's times, there have been times since I've been in here that you didn't collect enough money to even pay the advertising expense. Because a lot, a lot of lots are basically not worth anything because of the building on there has to be torn down and you have the expense of that, so...
So, like today, we're having a delinquent solid waste hearing, and if I remember correctly, we've done this every year, right, Dawn?
Yeah, it's only been, it's been a tax release group, uh, hearing.
Okay, so, um, who keeps track, is it, who, who is keeping track? Is that the appraiser's office or the treasurer? Who's keeping track of tax claim?
I think the treasurer's office. And then I think they provide it to the county attorney.
It's a little different process than a solid waste disposal.
And so, I think the last we discussed, we had had a tax sale maybe seven years ago. Does that sound, maybe eight years now? We talked about it last year. Does that sound familiar?
I would say somewhere near.
Seven or eight years ago?
I'd say that's about right.
By bidding?
You sold the public option.
Mm-hmm. And are you allowed to refuse if it doesn't meet the minimum?
Yes, it do.
It's quite, it's an extensive process to do. It takes a lot of advertising.
I think they have to hire an abstractor to, to do title of research.
That's why the costs don't usually, usually don't recoup the cost.
If it's been eight years, you're only going to, at the most, recoup half of that.
Yep. You know, you don't, the person that pays $500 for the lot doesn't have to pay, pick up the back taxes, so...
You're not requiring purchase with payment on the back taxes? That's not how it's done where I come from. You're paying the, you're paying the bill.
I don't, I don't think so. I think once they... I don't really know the process, but I think once the bid is given and they say, "Sold", then we take the tax and we collect it based on each year that it's delinquent until you run out of money, and then we have to do an abatement for it, right?
Wait, explain that again? When they, someone bids?
So, let's say you have a person that has $1,000 and it sells for $50. We will take the $50 and we will credit it to, I think, the previous back taxes until it gets paid. And let's say it only pays two years for it, then everything else is abated off. So, I have to do an abatement for every single year.
Right, but I guess my, my feeling is, if we're waiting almost a decade to do this, you know, we're potentially not collecting in the future what some new owner may pay. So, we have to weigh the difference in the cost to turn over those properties versus continuing to relinquish the collection. I mean, basically, what we're saying is if you don't pay your taxes in Lincoln County, just keep not paying them because we can't afford to sell your property out from under you, which that's a whole nother discussion on a different level, you know, I don't want to get into. But just from the county's perspective, we have to weigh, weigh those options. I mean, if that's not a regular practice here, I think it's kind of becoming an issue where I haven't seen the tax claim, uh, list. I don't know. Is that something that you've, that anyone's looked at lately?
I have, I don't see it. That would be the treasurer's office.
Yeah. I guess, I'm just trying to say, we have people that are regularly paying, and it's not fair for them to have to regularly pay their taxes to foot this bill of what we're going to probably pass today, which is our budget for the next year, while other people who don't pay just continue paying for years and years, not paying, excuse me, for years and years and years. And then we just say, "Well, we'll have to write it off because we can't afford to not collect, or can't afford to go through the process of attempting to collect any of it." I mean, one is greater than zero.
Wouldn't that why you have a sheriff's sale?
Well, a sheriff's sale is actually for mortgages, people that default on their mortgage, but it's the same concept, you know.
It doesn't involve, if you look, if you watch on a sheriff's sale, it's advertised multiple times before they ever sell it.
Well, and I know you have to do an actual printout. We, our, our county would have to provide a physical printout of all of the properties that would be on the list for the tax claim sale. That way, it's available to the public, and if you were a potential buyer, you could browse through what would be auctioned.
Was that put in the Lincoln County paper here about three weeks ago?
That's the, the most...
For the current year, yes, for the current year, but there are numerous, numerous ones that are, go several years back.
What is our state statute for years, though? What, I mean, what is our jurisdiction over that process? Is it like, you said three years?
I think it's four years, I think.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, she, I mean, we, we can't do anything in, because our solid waste hearing is set for 9:30, correct? If she has time, that'd be great.
Sorry, I'm not able to.
I just can see that, you know, if someone's property was extremely valuable and they didn't pay their property taxes, it would behoove us to go ahead and have a sale on that particular person because of the value. So, in essence, there's a discrimination there if you're just not selling lesser value properties on a tax sale because it actually costs the county money versus forcing those who have more valuable property to continue paying their taxes because the threat is there that we will have that tax sale because it's more likely that we collect a greater percentage of our money on a large sale where someone would be interested in bidding. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
But you also have to remember that person can come in and pay one year.
Great, then we collect the money, and I'm not saying that that...
And you can go through the whole process again the next year. Spend the money and...
Jerry, you're saying, if there are four, four years in delinquency, they come in and pay one year. You're still looking for three years for to get keep their property?
Yes, because there, there's a state statute, and I haven't read it, so I can't tell you what it says, but...
So, so, if it's going to be...
Hi, thank you for coming though.
Sure.
When does delinquent property qualify for a tax sale?
Four years.
Three years on farm ground or ground without...
If you get behind...
I'm going to say that, but that's not fair to other residents in the area that's in the neighborhood.
And it is a greater cost if you wait because you have penalties and fees. So, your taxes for that particular year that you're paying would be higher than if you just paid them on time. But I'm just getting at the long-term aspect of leaving go seven to 10 years. We were talking about tax claim. And so, do you, obviously, you would keep a whole list of the tax claim rule, correct?
In September, after the taxes have gone to redemption, I print out a list for the county attorney. I don't necessarily keep it, but I can print it at any time.
Okay, great.
She said it was three years on farm ground, unimproved property, if there's a house on it, it's four years.
That's interesting. That's the state statute?
And up until a certain time in the process, they can come in and pay one year, correct?
Yeah, to take it off, to take it off the tax sale, yeah.
Tax sale, so...
Unless it goes to the date, and then it all has to be paid.
Yeah, to the day of the sale.
To the day of the sale.
On the, on that particular day. If it's not paid on that day, then it continues on to the, yeah, gotcha. And do you happen to know the last year we did a tax sale?
Oh, goodness. Before my time, um...
Oh, you haven't done one?
I've never done one.
And how long have you been here?
I'm in my second term, so...
Okay, I thought we said maybe seven or eight years, so at least not, okay. So, do you have any idea how many properties or what kind of dollar figure you turned in last September?
I don't off the top of my head. I could go try to figure that out for you.
I'll, I'll ask you. I'll come up and get a, a list. I...
We'll get one, we'll get one here in a month, so...
It will be as of last year.
Right, right. Just out of curiosity, I mean, there have been some questions about some building structures, houses or whatever, where if, if they're so far behind, you know, what is that process? And what authority does the county have to do anything about that? We were, you know, they were saying we can't necessarily cover the cost of performing the tax sale?
Because it is a great cost, and there has to be research done to find people that maybe aren't even around here anymore. It has to be published in the newspaper.
Or unclaimed assets.
Certified mail has to be sent out, and I don't know exactly what the, the rules are on that, but it, it is a great cost, and then the court costs and all of that on top of...
So, you think that's the reason why we haven't proceeded with any tax sales? Because we don't want to absorb the cost of putting it on?
We don't have enough dollars out to make it worthwhile.
I guess I'm just concerned, and representing the concerns of those who do pay their taxes, you know, I mean, then what's the incentive there? So, then everyone just doesn't pay their tax, and we just sit, and we as a county say, "Well, we'll never afford to reclaim", so, no one pays.
Eventually, we will.
Right, and that's kind of my question.
And we get to the dollar amount that would make it worthwhile.
But what we were discussing is that's an unknown number, because maybe you can help us if this is not right, but we were just saying the bidding process, once you get that bid, it's the highest final bid, whatever that dollar amount is, gets applied to the back taxes, and the rest of it is basically relinquished. So, then we don't...
Abates, we don't, we're out.
So, then you can't really determine a dollar because there's no way to predetermine that, and you don't have the right of refusal to refuse a bid. So, don't pay the taxes on your land and come in and bid for a dollar less than what you owe in taxes.
Um, you can't bid on your own. You can't bid on your own, you can't have any family member bid on your land and then give it back to you. That's against the law.
Yeah, it's interesting. I mean, I'm, I'm just wondering how many other counties are not doing any tax sales?
The bigger counties do one yearly. Sedgwick County possibly does one twice a year, but the small counties don't.
It's got about a whole different dollar amount than the bigger counties.
Oh, yeah, they have just the certain lawyers to do that.
Well, do we have a, has anyone done the configuration on the numbers to talk about, you know?
Like I say, I run the report in the dollars every year after...
But I mean, who makes that determination? The county attorney?
County attorney.
Okay, well, then I can ask her that. What is the penalty percentage?
I think it's 10% this year, and then there's $16 publication fee.
That you pay when you come in to pay your delinquent taxes? You pay the publication fee? 10% penalty fee until the next year's tax bill comes out? Does it increase or...
The state sets those every year.
So, each year it could be different?
Could be.
Do you think that we hold any liability on structures that may have gone neglected and unpaid in taxes that pose a potential hazard to any particular community? I mean, I'm just thinking-
That would be kind of a legal question, not a legal question.
Well, if you haven't done any tax sales, you wouldn't, yeah.
I would say, if it was in the city, one would say, I'd, I'd leave a liability on it.
The city?
The city does.
They have a building code.
Does Lincoln, does the city of Lincoln have, um, what do I want to call it? Like a, I mean, yeah, I guess a code enforcement?
All cities have to have adopted the universal building code, or they don't get any code enforcement. They may not enforce it, they don't have to enforce it, but they have to adopt it.
Does, does Lincoln have a, an enforcement? Do they hire a vote inspector?
They've been doing some abatements on properties, tearing them down, forcing people to tear them down, but as far as, I'm not sure what they're doing. I think they do have a-
I know, I had put an addition on my house, and I didn't have to have any codes or inspections or anything like that.
No, but as far as nuisance properties I'm talking about.
Yeah, they can probably curtail it, so they're- Okay, I will come and get that list for you, or from you, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, we have some time in recess for a little while.
Sure, I can-
Nine thirty, is that what it says? Yeah.
We'll recess in one thirty, I guess.
Is this the updated one or the old one?
Yes, that's the updated. We'll call the meeting back to order. Next order of business will be the delinquent solowaste.
So, we have a list of dollar amounts owed. Beverly United Methodist Church, um, why is that in red?
Oh, because they still owe us, they-
They made a payment, but, okay, thirteen dollars, thirteen, okay, thirteen dollars and twenty-one cents. Country sold forty-three dollars eighty-eight cents. The ones with nothing, does that mean they're paid? Like, see this one? Daryl Otting?
He's on, but there's no amount.
There's no dollar amount?
Oh, that's because he's the owner, so that's who the property will go on. So, the delinquent business gets such to the property owner?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay. Kever Auto and Ag, ninety-four dollars twenty-four cents. Nancy's Fancy, seventy-six dollars sixty-three cents. Trune Brothers Garage, eighty dollars ninety-nine cents. Kenton Ford, forty-seven dollars twenty-three cents. Tony Howard, twenty-five dollars fifty-one cents.
Are any of those people in attendance?
I have a question before we proceed. Is this what has gone unpaid to the city or to-
That is unpaid to the county. So, the city's only collecting residential properties, and the county builds businesses?
Are these all businesses?
Some of them would be businesses, and others have done RCD materials, they deposit in them.
So, if it's an individual, it's CD material? If it's a business, it's an unpaid bill to the county? Okay. I do have a couple comments about that. If you have dumped at the landfill and haven't paid your bill, I think it needs to be paid. But my, my concern is, just from a personal experience, I received an increase in my county bill for the landfill fee that is the yearly fee, which is seventy-two dollars at the base.
At the base.
Okay. So, when I called and inquired as to why the amount went up, they said because the average weight that was being disposed of at the dumpster had increased. So, I asked for my weights, and there's no record. So, I'm a little bit concerned about increasing people's amounts based on a hypothetical number that doesn't exist, and I've had this concern brought to me, and then I experienced it personally, so I'm just wondering, what is our protocol? I mean, are we gonna weigh things and have some actual statistical numbers, or are we just going to pick and choose increases unbeknownst to anyone's policy or procedure?
I think if you ask to have it weighed, don't weigh it.
Well, I actually spoke with the, the owner of the business who picks up the trash, and he just said he could tell with his eyes how much weight was in there, so that's how the increase was assessed. So, I opted to just not have the service anymore, which now I still have to pay the base fee, that's a whole nother discussion, but I'd just like to focus on the increase discussion and how we're, how we are assessing that. Because if our, if the county's gonna handle the books for the business to do this, you know, it needs to have some kind of validity, verification. I mean, we have a scale there, you know, I don't know if he has a scale on his truck, but we have a scale at the landfill.
They would have to weigh empty, come over and pick up your trash alone, and then drive all the way back to the landfill, boy.
Or if he has a scale on his truck, he could just do the math. I don't know that he does, I'm just saying. Or if there's an actual, an actual concern about someone's weight being greater than whatever the pound, two hundred pounds or something is like an average that they use for the base fee, then that needs to have some kind of, I'm just saying, we, we can't continue to charge based on someone's assumption. It's just very selective. Or there is one, for all I know. I really don't know, I didn't ask. I just asked how they knew it had gone up, and he said visually. You know, you can put sixteen bags of stuffed animals or paper in your dumpster, it doesn't mean it weighs anymore, but, um, that's, I'm just sharing my personal experience, and other people have told me the same thing. They have opted out of the service that they're already paying into when the county does the billing, and gotten an external service, but we're still charging them. Now, along with that does come the ability to dump at the dumpster station, correct? But then these separate fills are the CD pit. And what, is that a yearly contract, or did we sign multiple years with that? I can't remember. Yeah. Yeah, that's also a concern, you know, we're, we're giving a five-year contract to a business that doesn't pay us by the weight, but then, when we do our transfer to Solina, how are we paying out? By weight? So, we're paying out by weight, but we're not receiving income by weight, we're just receiving a flat fee per residence. I just have some concerns about that process, so.
If there's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion to assess the delinquent fees to the tax rolls. I would move.
Just a second.
Any further discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You need each one of these signed, I'm close? If you have a sheet.
No, oh, no, I'll do a resolution for you. Next week.
Are you ready, Cheryl?
I am.
Okay.
Uh, I know the two commissioners here on the, on my left, but I have not met Alexa. I'm Cheryl Felletory, I grew up in Lincoln County. My mom and dad taught for sixty-five years out of Lincoln, and, uh, my, when my father retired, he spent his last three years at Lincoln Park Manor, and, uh, my mother currently lives there, she's lived here since twenty-four. So, as you can see, I have a very vested interest in, in Lincoln Park Manor and in this community. I, uh, I've booked a message, they called Alton Wallace, left a message on his phone that I, you know, just needed an update on where, where I was moving forward with Lincoln Park Manor. And, uh, so he kindly called me back Monday after he commissioned me and informed me that you had all appointed a working committee that was going, and Al Joseph and Kelly Larson and, I'm not sure who's the other, I don't think-
County attorney.
Okay, county attorney. And that you were going to gather the facts and figures and, and look at what needs to be done to move off the dead center and vote to do something. And so, my question to you, after a year and a half, and after all of the studies and the reports that you've been having done, and the people at Lincoln are supporting, I mean, I attended some of your county town hall meetings, and they were packed, and people, they were supporting Lincoln Park Manor. They didn't want it to close, you know, they, they felt like, in the past history, citizens of Lincoln County stepped up, they built the facility, they added on the chapel, they, you know, they, recently, Lincoln Park Manor, you know, the whole thing was updated. So, the community is behind you, they want that there. Now, we have a working committee, a new committee that's gonna need in September. Okay, and they're, they're experts. What is it, what do you want from that committee that you haven't heard before? What is gonna be the magic bullet that they're gonna come up with? The phrase, the idea, the word? What do you, have you charged them? What, what do they, what do you want to hear from them? Because you've had all the information, what new information are they gonna discover? And you're gonna say, ah, that's it, we're gonna vote? That's my question to each one of you.
I think that we thought we had a solution a year and a half ago that didn't work. And I think it's our, our intent to, the committee is gonna connect the dots as to the steps that we need to go through to take over the facility. We can all sit around and talk. We had a, a not-for, self-appointed, not-for-profit group that, that was trying to come up with something, but they weren't connecting the dots. They were the, their connective, you know, the dot was for us to pay John Grace four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and take it over. That was their connecting the dot. Well, there's a process as far as licensing, uh, setting up the financials, doing a not-for-profit board, you know. Their, their, their idea was great, and I agreed with it a hundred percent, except for the self-appointed board that had no money and no ability to get money other than us. So, I think our intent is to form a board similar to the Lincoln County Hospital Board and proceed from there, but we need the expertise of those people on that committee to connect the dots, to get us to that, to get us to that place.
And what are the dots?
Funding, licensing. I think, uh, the licensing and the funding and the financing is gonna be the biggest things. We've had one of the persons that represents Dane Hanson that has gone through the books and looked at him, but we have a longtime nursing home operator who has offered to help us connect those dots.
And that is?
Bob Siebel. He owns multiple nursing homes in Wisconsin and different places. He has a tie to the community, and he's offered to help us for free, basically, to get us through that process. I don't have the expertise to do it. Mr. Wallace and Alexis, I don't think, has the expertise to put this thing together. That's why we formed the committee that we formed. The not-for-profit board was a great bunch of people, but they didn't have the expertise to, to accomplish it. Their idea was good, but, you know, they were concerned about the facility, but, uh, they didn't have the abilities to connect all those dots. It just takes expertise in certain areas of the process, and that's why we went the direction with the committee, in my opinion.
Alton, do you agree, or is there a magic number figure or that you're looking for?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I, I think it's, it's one thing that we have to establish some way to stabilize the situation. We cannot continue to lease the facility out and then run into problems, and then we're back to leasing it out again. I think we need to have some better controls over that, and I think there are ways that we can do that. Within the last week, some other ideas or, or ways have surfaced, and I think that it's probably an area that's going to be looked at and discovered. I think, personally, I think that that nursing home ought to be able to be about self-sustaining. But we're not at that point right now, but I think by using the resources that we have in this county, sharing resources with the hospital, that we can make this, uh, to pretty much be self-sustaining. Certainly talked about some ideas of using services of that hospital that could benefit both places, and I think when I met with the committee, the nonprofit, before we set up the working committee, that number one is that we must provide the best healthcare we can in this county. Those residents deserve the best healthcare we can, and that has to be our topic. The other is, we have to maximize the healthcare dollars in this community as much as possible. We have got to use our pharmacy, we've got to use our hospital, we've got to use our nursing home together, along with the health department, to capture as many of those income dollars from insurance, from private pay that we can, uh, to meet the expenses. Certainly, one of my philosophies is that we do not want it to be a burden to the taxpayers of this county, and right now, it is, appears it's going to be. And so, if we can get that thing organized so that, and there are some nursing homes out there that, that have the concept that we're looking at, that seem to be, uh, able to, to do that with few less, mother's going to cost, I won't say it won't take any tax dollars, but I don't think it'll take a hit every month, that there will be times we have to step in and pump some money into it. It's just like any operation in this United States. There isn't a, a company or a working group that is, does not have federal money pumped into it every once in a while to keep it sustained. There, there is now, you know, every enterprise, at one time or another, has had to seek federal help or taxpayer money, and, and we're no- and, and we're no different.
Alexa?
I would say, save the very last comment there. I agree with everything that they've put forth to you. And thank you for coming in and asking the tough questions, because I think a lot of roundabout discussion has taken place, but I do appreciate you coming and being very direct. It's been a learning experience for me, and I can't say that I have any knowledge about the prior changeover in ownership, um, just this most recent changeover. And so with the last two owners, um, what I have done in the process is a little bit of my own research, and one of the first things I said last year, before there was a sale, is that Lincoln County is one of the only, if not the only county, that rents to a for-profit corporation. And the reason, can you think of another one?
I can't off the top of my head, but there are some.
Well, if you can't think of another one, then I'm gonna go with my statement. But the point is, um, what I brought to the table last year was, the other counties that I've researched, especially ones in a similar size and vicinity to us, they either rent to a nonprofit organization, and that's their business, renting nursing homes. Um, and the problem there is, um, an organization like Good Sam's is not necessarily interested in this size of facility, so that is assembly block. The other option, which I also talked about last year, was a county-appointed board, and I think that's the direction in which we're headed. The reason for this is, basically, to ensure the transparency. If there's going to be tax money going into a business, no matter what the business's purpose is, there has to be some sort of transparency. And I think a lot of the fog that was created over the last several years was due to, um, privacy, and, and every business owner is entitled to their own privacy. But when you start asking for public funds to fund your private enterprise, and your books are private, there's a big disconnect there, and that's what we've experienced. So, when Aljo says that he sees that it could potentially be self-sufficient, that may be true, to an extent, maybe with some certain subsidies. We keep absorbing the tax, the property tax. We keep absorbing, maybe, the building insurance, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know the details there. And I think maybe that's some of what the committee can help to formulate. I do think the committee's a good idea. We need some brainstorming. We didn't have brainstorming last year, other than someone coming in and pitching us proposals. And I don't know how much you followed along with some of the, um, developments there, but, basically, you know, the county, in my opinion, has done its part to help subsidize. We've picked up the tab on several things that were not our responsibility. And if you don't expect a business owner to produce results when you are their landlord or you are helping fund their operation, then you get stuck with the tab, and that's happened a lot. So I think that's the, the primary concern from the county perspective. Now, all of the talk about closing, I'm not sure where that comes from. It seems like people just start talking about the nursing home closing as if that's the alternative to the county fully funding whatever proposition is laid on the table. You know, I'm, I'm still confused about that. I don't know where that comes from. Uh, the only person that can make the decision to close their own business is the business owner themselves. So if we don't have a business owner sitting here saying that they are closing their business, then that shouldn't even really be part of the discussion. I am concerned about that. It keeps coming up, and it's very, um, it's a red herring. So, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I guess I'm, I'm in favor of continuing the progress with the committee, and I'll use the phrase that Terry said, connecting the dots. There are some steps that need to be followed, because we have to have, basically, the structure will be two entities. You're going to have one that is a nonprofit that is able to receive funding, and that will have to be structured in a way that, you know, to get your nonprofit set up, you have to have so many donors and an X amount of initial money, and then you have to file with the IRS and get your 501(c)(3) and da-da-da. That's a relatively short process. The second entity will be the actual administrative entity, and that's where we're looking at appointing a board, which will make decision, make decisions as far as paying bills, hiring and firing, um, especially overseeing the administrator, and that's where they, they compared it to the hospital board. You know, we appoint the board, the board has their meetings, they hire the administrator, and then the administrator takes on the responsibility of the day-to-day duties. Now, I'm not sure what the credentials and license, licensing is for the hospital, but right now, the knowledge that I have about, about the nursing home is, you have to have a facility license. That is what it's potentially for sale. Okay? The last proposition that came to us was not the sale of the license, it was the sale of debt. I don't know what you do for a living. What do you do for a living, or did you?
I, I work for, um, Social Media Innovation Services, Intepedia.
Okay. So, basically, just for lack of any better explanation, the most lay thing I can explain is, if I wanted to sell you something that I said is actually owned by someone else, and they want money for it, and I'm not making any money with this product that I have, you wouldn't really pay me anything for it, because it's not worth anything. And if you were a big-time investor that wanted to have write-offs, you might buy up that debt, because it looks good on your books. You wouldn't necessarily buy it to make money from it. So the proposal that came to the table was for us to buy out someone's debt. And I think we all agreed unanimously that that was not a good place, you know, to put ourselves in as the county. Now, when we talk about purchasing the license, that's a different story, because you can utilize that license to run the business. You can get a new license. That's a lengthy process. From everyone that I've spoken with, and some of the schools that do the credentialing and, and things like that, you're talking about two, actually, three separate license, licenses. But the, the one for the facility is potentially transferable, and I think the committee needs to find out, can you transfer it from a for-profit corporation to a nonprofit entity? Or, or actually, it would actually probably, I think both entities have to become nonprofits, because the board itself would have their executive members' names on the license, the way that I understand it. So if we were the board, it would say, the facility, you know, the facility license for K-Dads belongs to Terry Finch, Aljo Wallace, and Alexis Wood. And that would be the license that we use with the state, to then produce the numbers that you have to produce in order to operate. Okay? But I believe that the funding has to be channeled through the nonprofit, um, corporation, for lack of a better term there, the nonprofit entity. So there's a dual-sided thing to this, and, um, I would say my primary concern is, the administrative board needs to start looking into the process of how they're going to hire and facilitate the administration, because now that brings us to the second license. The license that is not transferable is the one that is owned by the single person who, if you look around, they're hiring right now, all over the state, for hospital administrators, is the technical title. So when you receive your hospital administrative license, it's X amount of classes and hours, and then pass the exam, and then there's some continuing ed and things like that. That is what the county has no control over at the moment, because it's not up for sale. It's not, you know, I don't even know what the sale transaction is going to be with the facility license, let alone, we have to have an administrator with a license as well. From what I understand, I don't believe Steve Granzo is interested in taking on that role. You know, he has his hands full with what he's doing.
Steve, I'm sorry.
Steve Granzo is the administrator that's hired by the hospital board.
Oh.
I'm just using it as an example, and, you know.
I didn't have the last name, so I'm.
Yes, yes. So, that would be the second license. The third license, if we were to continue to offer home healthcare, there's a third license for that. And there are quite a few people that hold that license primarily and none other, so I think that would probably be a bit easier of a task to find someone that would want to do that side of it. So that, I, I feel, is lesser of a priority. You know, the board that is going to be appointed, which we have not really discussed yet, I think that probably.
Nonprofit.
No, the administrative board.
For Lincoln Park Manor?
Yes. I mean, I'm assuming they will meet monthly. They will, in fact, hire the administrator, you know. And then, so, is it called, what's it called, the foundation, the hospital foundation? Is there a name, a technical term for that?
There is.
And is the board itself also a nonprofit?
No.
No? Okay.
I don't know.
So I suppose that might be the similar, a similar structure. You might not have to have two separate nonprofits, but the funding will have to go to the nonprofit. So that may be a separate board, and you may have some crossover, and I think the hos, you told me the hospital does. There's a crossover between the foundation that does the money transactions and the board that meets and makes the decisions about the administration. So that's what we're looking at now.
The hospital foundation is actually a 501(c)(3) or the actual hospital is not, so.
Okay, so I think that's probably, you could probably do it either way, but that structure would probably be what we're headed toward, having this appointed board, having the foundation that is monetarily responsible for, you know, receiving the funds, et cetera, et cetera. That way, that is all open. It's not a privately-run business with a sole proprietor or a corporation that is paying themselves an undisclosed amount of money, and then this county is then subsidizing a dollar amount for the operating.
A dollar for the nonprofit.
Mm-hmm.
Now, so continue.
No, that's, that's basically my explanation of how I've seen it unfold and, and where we're going, and you asked about the committee, and I think the committee's job is to iron out those details, because, like he said, none of us know, I mean, I know the steps to form the nonprofit, the steps, let's say, but as far as the licensing, um, K-Dads has been very reluctant to be in contact with us, and that's a concern. Kansas Department of Aging and Disability, they are the ones that issue the license. So if we apply for a new license for the facility, now, but I'm still confused about that, and I think that's what the committee needs to figure out. Can you transfer this facility license from a for-profit corporation to a nonprofit? I'm not sure. Probably, but when they did it the last time, it was, he bought her corporation. John Grace bought Kristen Robinson's corporation, so with that sale came the license. Do you see what I'm saying? This isn't the same type of transaction. We're not necessarily buying a corporation.
Okay.
So that license is, is a primary concern, so is the administrative license, because you cannot operate a nursing home, and I think that was maybe suggested last week, but it's not true. You cannot operate a nursing home without those intact.
Right.
And then the third part of that would be the home health, uh, care license, which is separate.
Well, I, um, you were the one, you'd con, you'd heard about John Grace and contacted him, and kind of was the one that brought him in. You guys met with him, did some things, and, and he's been involved. Full disclosure, we have been friends with John Grace for forty years. We lived in Topeka. John, uh, came to, well, we first met John in Manhattan, Kansas, when he was a young person, thirty-something, and he ran the premier nursing center, campus up Kansas, aging, and then Lark Hills. And I don't know if you've ever been there, but they have single apartments, they have, and they go all the way up to long-term care. And he did a wonderful job. He was a pillar of the community. People loved the job he was doing. He stayed there, and he worked probably ten or fifteen years. During that time, he met my husband, who also worked with aging programs in, in Riley County. So they became friends, but also business, uh, you know, associates. And John has, in the past forty years, he's been recognized nationwide for his commitment to aging the elderly, his innovation, his expertise, and go on and on and on. But I, I'm, you know, when John emailed me and said, guess what, I'm going to Lincoln to meet with the county commissioners, I'm like, what? And we were so happy, because we knew the situation out here, and, you know, and we knew about his innovative, you know, the greenhouses and this, that, and the other, and we were so pleased, and we knew John's work history, his, his, we knew everything about John, and we knew it would, he would do well in Lincoln County. And so, as we struggle along, John has, has worked with Smith County, he, they think he works, walks underwater. They have their nonprofit up and running. They raised a million dollars for their seniors, senior programs up there. Yes, they did.
Actually, they're borrowing, they're, they're borrowing somewhere around seven million dollars.
Okay, that one.
There's two different three-million-dollar loans. There's also a local loan, and I think the actual amount of donated money is considerably less than a million dollars. If you take the grass and grain, there was a write-up in the grass and grain of all the USDA loans that were given out, and there was a write-up on that Smith Center operation burden, so.
Well, the point is, yeah, you got, you need to move forward, but I also want to say, Kelly Larson has done a great job in this community trying to bring in economic development. Why would you put at risk sixty employees out of Lincoln Park Manor and a two-million-dollar payroll? Kelly's working, you know, day and night to, to improve the economics here in this community, and you put that, those people at risk? People have left out there. All the nurses have left. My mom was crying, because the Paul, you know, a lot of the nurses have left, because they hear the rumors. They hear, you know, people make up rumors about John Grace. I mean, his reputation is at stake here, too.
We don't operate that business. John operates that business.
Right. Bought it from Kristen, and you guys should have bought it from Kristen back years ago and handled the whole thing. So, for seventy thousand some dollars, why don't you buy the business? Appoint a nonprofit board. You guys pick the people.
Where did you get seventy thousand dollar number at?
That's what John paid for.
Oh, well, you need to go out and talk with John. We can't discuss the financials that John has discussed with us.
Okay.
But.
But he's not wanting four hundred thousand?
That was the last proposal that we received.
That's the proposal we got.
The last proposal that we received.
Okay, well, then, you need to visit with him. I can only tell you what I know, and what he paid for Kristen.
But I'm just trying to, to explain business-wise.
I know the whole thing.
You don't pay for something that's worth nothing. And we, we had, we had a financial consultant come to the table. We discussed this. You cannot invest money into someone else's debt. I mean, you don't move into an apartment and pay the last tenant's bills. You pay your own bills.
At one point, you guys owned it and ran the.
No, that has not been true, ever.
Kristen bought it from.
No, that's not true. The Wirths owned it. There was a.
Lincoln Park, or, uh, Mid-America Nursing Home had it for thirty years, thirty-seven years.
Yeah, Lincoln has never, that's why I said to you, when I did my research, Lincoln has not operated it with an appointed board, nor through, well, I guess, was, was Mid-America a nonprofit? I don't think so. I think they're a for-profit corporation.
They're for-profit. They had it, started out with Good Sam, and went to Mid-America, and Mid-America had it for thirty-some odd years.
Yes.
So, the purchase.
But we never operated.
When Kristen purchased it from the Wirths, who owned the Mid-America operation, and when John purchased it from Kristen, that's completely out of our hands. We have no purchasing power. A county, a county commission cannot purchase a business. So if I own a corporation and I sell it to you, nobody else has any say in that. That is a person-to-person private contract there. There's no say. What this board has served as before me and now with me is a landlord. That's different.
Right.
So, if there is to be a transition to, to an appointed board with nonprofit, et cetera, et cetera, or even if we were to just find a nonprofit that wanted to come in and we leased to them, that's still a landlord role.
Yeah, I know, I get that. Two districts, school districts, came before you and needed money. They act, they had great needs. They, and I, and I get the Lincoln County paper. They were very appreciative that you gave them some money to, because of state funding, you know, that whole thing, you know, that whole process. So, we've taken care of the youth. Are we gonna take care of the vulnerable elderly in Lincoln County, especially the ones at Lincoln Park Manor?
That's our intent, but we're not gonna fund a private business.
Correct.
Well, then, then John walks away, and then what?
That we're gonna operate the nursing.
Exactly.
But you, you know, you're throwing those seventy thousand dollar number out, but we've never heard from John. Trust me, not even close to that. It was in a public meeting several times. It's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, and, and that figure, so in my mind, why wouldn't you take seventy, seventy, let's say it, seventy-five thousand dollars, buy John out, appoint a board, and get moving?
I would say John needs to make that proposal, because that's not the proposal that was made to us.
Yeah, this is the first time we're hearing this number, what you're saying. Yeah, this is the first time we're hearing this number, what you're saying.
We need to.
The other thing you need to be aware of is Can Care and the Medicaid debacle in Topeka. And because of their IT programs and they've just appointed the same company to monitor, monitor Medicaid, process Medicaid applications, Lincoln Park Manor, they're slow rolling the money. So that's another problem, Lincoln Park Manor. The state is not processing Medicaid, Can Care applications fast enough. And so, you know, there's thousands, thousands of dollars out there that they, you know, when you are there.
It's been that way for three years, ever since they went to the centralized application.
Well, every business has their own accounts payable and their own accounts receivable. So that would really have nothing to do with us.
Oh, yeah, it does.
No, it doesn't.
The state dollars, yes.
I can tell you.
No, that's on their accounts receivable. Even if we were to take over, those are past due bills that are still owed to the corporation for which they were billed. You can't come in as a new owner and bill for someone else's accounts receivable. It doesn't work like that.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying you need to monitor. Susan Kincaid is on the joint committee for Can Care. They met last week and they voted to, we drink the water, to go, to renew the contract for those IT people to process Medicare applications. And they have failed miserably.
I've had conversations with both of our representatives and our senator and their oblivious to the problem.
Well, Susan Kincaid serves on that committee. So she has, you know, been very, I contacted her when I heard about all the Medicare stuff. So thank you for this opportunity. Appreciate your time and knowing where I'm at.
Thank you for the questions.
If John has a new proposal, we'd like to hear it.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you've ever watched any of the videos, but, I mean, Terry asked him what the license is worth. And in my personal opinion, I'm not speaking for the board, but in my personal opinion, that's the only sellable item unless there's some other medical equipment purchases that we can make, et cetera. But you don't sell debt. That's just, you don't sell debt. And that was what was proposed.
Hey, we'll open the budget during now, give it its light.
Did anyone else want a copy of the budget? I have some. Anyone else anywhere?
Oh, yeah. We just have to sign one, Don?
Yes. Or two?
Two.
Two? Is there two there, Terry?
Uh, yes.
Any want a copy?
What I'd like to show you is what was, was given in the, in the Lincoln paper. You read it from there? No, I can't hardly read real close.
I'd stand a better chance of reading it from there than I would of closing.
Yeah, that's a, that's almost an injustice to the whole system is to make something so people can't understand what, what's going on. If you follow across some of the items here over the years, there's very high expenditures for some things. Not to pick on, you know, the cemetery or a, uh, real fire department or ambulance, but you look at some of those expenditures and they really increase and they've been approved by you as a board.
Which one specifically are you talking about?
Well, get your paper out.
I got it.
Look at the Fremont Cemetery, the first one.
We don't operate that cemetery.
Fremont Cemetery, uh.
We don't operate those cemetery.
Those budgets are set so that all that money is spent.
You approved this, so.
That's right. That's a much, much money available that they can spend. It doesn't mean that they're spending it. It means that we have got to appropriate what money in there to spend it down to zero. It's just like the watershed or anything else. You make it come out to zero. Isn't that right, Don? Kind of?
They, they have a board, correct.
Well, just, just to give you that as an example, in 17, they spent $750. In 18, they spent $1,500. And in 19, they want to spend $2,798. Now, what is?
How much was the carryover?
What is happening to our government locally?
Is that just for, just for maintenance, like loading or what? I can't read it out.
It's a, it's what's happening to our.
I think you need to have that discussion with the board of that cemetery.
They get added onto hours to help save them money because it costs $56 to advertise their budgets. So they do a combined budget along with Lincoln County. The state allows that to occur so that it saves them advertising costs in their, in the paper. Because basically, it's like $56 every time somebody publishes that really tiny app.
I think his question is, are we setting the allowable expenditure number and are we taxing for that? That's the question, right?
That's where they're saying that they need to talk to the cemetery board. I'm saying the reason why the cemetery board is added onto hours is to help them save money because if they're levying $700 and $56 of it is going to the newspaper, what is the purpose of that?
They make that decision. We don't. We just, we just advertise it along with our stuff to save them the advertising costs. But as far as the setting of the budget and stuff, they set the budget, we don't.
Well, I still say we can pick other items too. But that one, we go from $750 to $1,500 to $20, almost $3,000. It almost went up four times in three years. I just want to know what as a commission board, in, in all areas, are we going to cut taxes? What have we done to cut taxes? Now, I see because of increased evaluation, the total, the total amount of mill levy for the county in 17 was 110. Read this right. Last year in 18 is 107. And opposed 19 is 102. Now, it's true, the mill levy has gone down, but the amount of money, tax dollars that I pay is going to increase. And I just keep wanting to say that for economic development for Lincoln County, taxes need to decrease. They need to go down and not go up. And I don't see how you're going to get anybody to come in and look at numbers that go up like this and want to jump in and have part of them.
Yeah, I think, I understand what you're saying because there, there's a misconception that we can fund economic development. And I forget which president said that, but you can't tax a nation into wealth. So we're, we're funding the concept of economic development. But true economic development means that free commerce has more rain and more liquid, uh, assets. So I agree with what you're saying. I think what I don't understand yet, and maybe, Don, you can explain, is, so go back to the cemetery board just for an example, because what you're showing is like a 200% increase and that's. Right, right. So you're, yeah, and, and I see what you're saying. You just take the percentages. Let's not even talk about the dollar amount. Or when the board sets their budget, is that number showing, Aljo, you asked if that was rollover?
I'll tell you. And they collected $600 in 17. They are asking for $600 more in 19.
So basically what happens.
They add GORM tax collected in 17 on this, it says $600. Down here where it says tax required for the 2019 budget, it's $600 again.
Yes. So basically what happens is we send out a treasurer's report. They're supposed to send it back in. And then it, it tells you what their income and their expenses were for the cemetery. Then we send them out a budget request trying to help them save dollars. So it used to be that they had to do their budgets on their own and pay for it. Well, then the state allowed you to be able to combine it, is called special districts within the county, to help save some of those districts money because each of the fire districts would do their own budget. Each of the cemetery districts would do their own budget. And I think that occurred when the Wirths was here. So then I send out a budget request to them. They tell me what they would like to have. If they don't respond, then we just give them the same amount. We levy the same dollar amount that they used the previous year. And that's where their, how their budgets come about. Now, like Spillman used to have like $80,000 some dollars and I would have people come in and ask, why are they budgeting $80,000? Because you have to give them what, you have to give them the budget authority to be able to spend what they have in their bank accounts in case there was a catastrophe happen. Let's say a bunch of stones got knocked down.
Okay, so let's explain, let's stop there.
So that's the expenditure part of it.
So budget authority is the ability to spend everything that you have in reserves and what you're taxing new.
Spillman received like an $80,000 gift.
Yes. So I called, when they got theirs, I called and I said, what am I doing wrong with their budget? Because everybody keeps thinking they're going to spend $80,000 some dollars in one year. And they told me that because they had a, a bequest given to them with specific purposes, that I could create a memorial fund in order for that money to be moved out so that when they do get ready to spend those specific purposes, they can use it for those specific purposes. You know, you can't help it. When people donate money to you, but they put so stringent guidelines on it, you can't help that. So in other words, the expenditures, you budget and give them the authority to spend every last penny that they have. So that is why it says $3,000. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to spend $3,000.
But it, okay, I think the disconnect is, it doesn't mean that the new tax is for $3,000.
Correct.
That's the.
Total amount of money that they have.
That's the total amount of expenditures, the total amount of tax needed.
Right. But then, and that leads to the question as to if they have everything that they taxed for last year, why are they taxing for the same dollar amount again in the following year? There's a, there's a discourse there.
But you don't, I don't, I'm not familiar with that cemetery, but do they have a fence around it? Do they need to repair?
They could be planned, right. They could be planning to make a big purchase. And so they don't spend any money one year and they tax six, another $600 for a third year in a row, but then they spend $1,800 on their related purchase.
I think basically all of the cemetery districts are budgeting what they spend to pay for Mowers to come in and vote. And they're hoping to gosh that nobody comes in and knocks over those stones. Because if somebody comes in and knocks over those stones, there's no recourse for them. They have to fix them. Or they leave them.
Didn't Spillman put in a new fence with part of that money that they were getting bequested? It seemed to me like they were going to or something. But what Don drives, if someone, Delia Pitters left this county a tremendous amount of money, but it's only good for certain things. And it's only been used once, I think, since I've been here. But we can't change that. We can't change the bequest, so.
Okay, that, it wasn't just one cemetery.
I'll go through, I'll go through them for you. I'll go through, I'll go through for you. Mission Cemetery is the one you questioned. They asked.
I questioned, I questioned all four of them.
I'm going to go through each one of them. They requested $600 in taxes in 2017. They spent $750. Then in 19's budget, they're estimating that they need another $600. Well, they're projecting in 18 that they're going to spend $1,500. So they're going to take down their cash reserves. I go to Rosette Cemetery. They collected $917 as tax. They spent, and that's in 17, they spent $839, so they had a little cash reserve. They're estimating they're going to spend $2,000 in 18 and they're asking, or 19, $951, so about $60 increase there. Or no, $40 increase in Rosette. In Spillman, Spillman asked for $2,130. In 17, they spent $3,000. And they're estimating to spend $7,000 in 18. And in 19, they're asking for $2,160. So they're asking for 30 more dollars than they did in 17, actually $10 less than in April. As for 17, they got $1,945. They spent $6,930. In 18, or in 19, they're asking for $2,000, just like they asked for in 18. And they're estimating to spend $11,000 in expenses in 18, which I don't think they'll spend that much, but they might. Uh, if you go to Barnard Real Fire Department, in 17, they asked for $14,857. They spent.
In 17, that is, the 17 column is what they actually received in taxes.
Yeah, yeah, that's what they sent you. And I think they spent $18,299. They're asking this year for $15,511, which is a little bit less, about $80 less than they did ask for in 18. In 17, Lincoln Beverly asked for $31,229. They spent $29,603. And 18, they're asking for, or in 18 and 19, they asked for $31,500. Lincoln First District asked for 61,000. In 17, they got $61,488. They spent $68,928. In 18 and 19, they asked for $62,458, which is a little bit more than they asked for or got in 17. And Hunter Real Fire District, in 17, they got $33,640. They had total expense of $46,047. And in 18 and 19, they're asking for 33, they asked for $33,000. Sylvan Grove asked for $28,000, or got $28,900 in 17. They spent $34,610. And in 18 and 19, they asked for $28,500. And that's all of them that I have. So you know, Howard, you need to look at what the Edvorm tax they got and how much they're requesting. And that tells you whether they're asking for more money. So that, that's how we figure the, the tax, is what they ask for.
It's going to figure out, I, I'd almost be for sure that my total tax bill, without adding any property to it, the taxes are going to, dollar tax is going to be more this next year than they were last year.
Howard, you pay $2 an acre on the grass. In Nebraska, it's $30 an acre.
If I pay, just say I, if I paid, say, $25,000 tax last year, it's going to be more this year because spending has not decreased on the county level.
Um, and I would, I would ask you if any of your expenses have decreased on your farm in the last year?
Income sure has.
Have the expenses, have the expenses decreased?
Okay, but our expenses.
We need to buy fuel and equipment and repairs just like you do on the farm.
No, this is that you can't, but you can't do a comparison from levying money as an income to justify your expenses versus being subject to the market to receive an income to justify.
We are subject to the market every day in this, on our expenses at our county. We are subject to the market.
No, you're requesting money from a, from a resource to fund what you plan to spend. That's not how you run a business. You don't request money based on your expenditures. You receive money.
You set your prices by what your expenses are in a business.
Actually, in agriculture, you don't get to send your, you don't get to set your own prices.
Well, agriculture is different, but in, and you set a business. In a business, you guarantee you, if their freight is going up on the dirt they're bringing in, they're going to increase the price of the groceries on the shelf, aren't they? Because they want to make a profit. And farmers try every other thing to, to make a profit. I mean, that's what we're all in for, is profit, right?
There is a guarantee there though, isn't there? LDP.
And on the soil, on the soil conservation, the committee came in here and they've been getting $2,000 or $20,000, I guess $20,000 in the last couple of years and they won $22,000. Well, that's a 10% increase just on a small item and you approve it right away. 10% increase, uh, good cause, you say? Well, could have gone the other way. Could have said, well, we're going to, we're going to make it $18,000. Never been, never been 10% decrease. Maybe that's the pressure you should have taken on some of the smaller items.
And who's going to bear the expense of that decrease?
Maybe less hours' work we're taking care of with the management. That's what that was for, is your salary, was it not?
I believe so.
Part of it goes for the subsidy on septic systems and stuff like that.
Um, speaking of that, I do think we need to address something though. We did not receive an ambulance budget. All kinds of budgets were turned in at different times. I think we need to have some sort of expectation, especially from our own departments now. I mean, I I mean, I know we have limited ability to control some of those other things, but I don't have an ambulance budget, Dawn.
We had one.
No, it was given to us at the, at, when we, when we put the budget together is when we received it, it was not turned in prior. And I'm sorry, I just tried to print, some people had asked for a discussion on the elderly distribution. I don't, I printed out the wrong, I printed out the, so, the Lincoln Senior Center budget, I printed out the Council on Aging budget, and I printed out the wrong Sylvan document here, I'm sorry. And I don't have that. I mean, I do, but we received it early. But I think we should suggest a deadline, that way we can have them. Because a lot of other counties publish their intentions before they do their budget. I don't know what I did with that. Do you have the Sylvan Senior Center budget request? Thank you. How could I miss that?
I want that back.
I don't know what I did with that.
I don't know, I think I'm gonna flip to something, I'm gonna get some backup. Too many papers.
Dawn, I have a question about the ambulance billing line item there. Are we, did we thoroughly discuss what our expectations for income are gonna be? Or is that some kind of figure that we've already definitely manipulated? Yes, yes.
Yes, we discussed that.
Ambulance. Okay, receipts. Reimbursement.
I think they left this year, had a hundred thousand for seventy-five, reduced their shares to seventy-five. Cause he had a draft.
Okay, so we reduced, okay, so we had a hun...
I have the draft here, so...
Is it, is it under the line item called runs?
Ambulance fees, it should say.
Mine says runs, I think.
Yep.
Isn't that the income, the runs? The other one, I'll be right back, I'm gonna go get a copy of this, I made the wrong copy.
Yeah, it's under ambulance runs.
Yeah.
Is that under runs?
Yeah.
Cause in the draft, he had a hundred thousand in the center column, and he wrote, here's for nineteen.
Right, but my worry was, what are we actually going to collect for eighteen? Cause if we leave it at a hundred thousand...
I think we're gonna get there.
Okay.
I can tell you where we're at.
Yes, please, I thought we should at least re-discuss that.
We can't change it anyway, we can only lower it.
Right, but a hundred, I'm saying, if a hundred is too high, we should be lowering it.
We can't, no, no, no.
If we lower that one, it's gonna chug, go up.
It's gonna increase the revenue.
It's gonna increase.
We can't lower income, we can only lower expenses.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, to compen, if we're not gonna get a hundred, to compensate for that, we should be lowering the seventy-five column.
But if you lower it, it increases the taxes.
Yeah.
On the seventy-five thousand that we're projecting for?
Yes, yes.
Oh, it's income, it's income, I'm thinking backwards, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Even lower the ex, the expense.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm looking at it backwards.
You can lower the expense, but you cannot do anything.
Well, that was my concern, are we going to reach the projected income?
I think we are.
Okay.
Let me tell you where we're at. Okay, right now, we are at thirty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-eight.
Thank you.
And we know the ISF, that is true. Okay, so the last update was August twenty, so, for the ambulance.
Okay.
And with that, we have thirty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars collected. And we know I took over receipts for over six thousand just on Friday.
Okay.
So, I think we're gonna be okay.
And what was our total current in capital outlay? Did we use any of that for the payment, for any payments on the new ambulance? Or did we pay a one hundred percent of that from the capital improvement?
If you take ten thousand out of the ambulance council outlay fund, so, current balance is sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, and then we're budgeting twenty-five? Right, so that could be, I guess, yeah, that's what I'm looking for. Where is that manipulation if, if that income doesn't reach a hundred? So, we have twenty-five thousand.
It's like transfer.
Okay, that was one of, one of my concerns. We had a brief conversation during the recess about the seventy-five thousand that we've allocated for the mill levy for elderly services. And I just pulled up the budgets from the three entities so that we can look at that. What the total is there.
Considered by more than the seventy-five.
Right. So, Lincoln Senior Center has a budget request of forty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty. And that's up from two thousand eighteen at thirty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty-one. I guess they've just increased everything a bit. Four, three thousand two hundred dollars in wages. A little more in repairs, City of Lincoln, expenses up a little. Okay, and then you have Sylvan Senior Center at... Okay, I have Sylvan Senior Center at twenty-four thousand one hundred and thirty-two. But that, does that include this year somewhere? Did we talk about that, or that's not including the back payment from this year?
That's two thousand nineteen thirty.
Okay. Twenty-four one thirty-two. Twenty thousand two hundred and twenty-two. Okay, so that brings us to seventy-two thousand three hundred and fifty-two with both senior centers. And the Council on Aging has a two thousand nineteen budget request for fifty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-four, which is up to three thousand from last year. A little less than... So that's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars in requests from the mill levy that was set at seventy-five. So it's a little less than fifty percent. So do you have any thoughts on going across the board with the percentage? Doing distributions based on knowing that you had given instructions to the Council on Aging to keep fifty percent of their budget in tow, so that would be fifty percent of their two thousand and eighteen budget. That was the last thing you had said to them, fifty-two eight thirty-four divided by two. Twenty-six thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars would be the dollar amount in their savings account if they had fifty percent of their budget saved. And I think we were just told by member, it was about, what, sixty some thousand?
I think all three entities are gonna be disappointed in what they did if they're expecting us to fund the whole none of those budgets. We obviously have no intention of funding the whole none of those budgets, or we wouldn't accept the amount we're levying at seventy-five thousand dollars.
Here's my question though, if, if it's a public, publicly instituted mill, and so, for example, this year, we have the twenty-eight, twenty-three thousand five hundred, twenty-eight thousand five hundred left. Dawn, are, we can't particularly use that for anything else because it was levied specifically under a public vote to, to go to...
As long as it's services for the elderly.
Right, but I'm saying, we can't put it into our own capital improvement or do anything like that with it.
We could utilize it on the nursing home or something like that though. You could justify that as being services for the elderly. So, there are multiple things the money could be used for, but there obviously is not enough to go around.
No, I agree with that, but I think that's why we, we're, you know, we need to have the discussion, at least what the intention is. I was just doing some numbers, we approved seventy-five thousand for two thousand eighteen. Gave forty-two thousand five hundred of it to the LCCA, who in turn gave seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty-six to the Lincoln Senior Center, which left them nineteen thousand nine hundred and forty-four from the first distribution. And then, so the second distribution is that twenty-eight thousand five hundred that we talked about distributing after the audit report. But I guess what I'm saying is, if we know that there is approximately sixty thousand dollars in the bank for the LCCA going into the next year, I mean, I don't know what their expenses will be for this last quarter, but...
I think, to get closer to the end of the year, that's something we will have to take into account is the amount of money that's carried over.
Oh, I'm just asking, are we still sticking to the precept that we acknowledge they should keep fifty percent of their budget in reserves, which is twenty-six thousand dollars, which is a third of what's potentially there versus, you know, versus funding their next year's budget for them when they haven't spent that two-thirds towards their own oper, you know, toward their own operation?
I think that's what we told them last year was, and we wanted that spent down, so... I would entertain a motion to approve. We certify.
Yes, you may.
The reason we came is we were just wondering what we can expect. Is this twenty in time, we have not received a single cent from anyone?
Because you submitted in writing that you would not accept any.
And we requested that it would come from the commission.
And we haven't had a chance to review the audits.
Okay, so we, we're, we're wondering either how much we have to fundraise to go forward with what we're doing.
I would say...
By the point in time, I've got eighty-year-old, ninety-year-old people, our fundraising, get the money to keep our doors open. And we're not, we're, and if we're willing to do that, if that's what it's gonna take. But, you know, the looking forward to next year, we were wondering where we stand.
Well, I think Mr. Wallace told, said that after we review the audits, we will decide how to distribute the money.
Our audit has been done since May.
Well...
End of May. And it's not our fault that they haven't taken care, they're part of the audit.
It's the auditors, it's not them. The auditors have a review board, which I'd never heard of before, but I asked our auditor when he was here, and he goes, yeah, it has to go through a review board when it's completed. That was the holdup, was getting it through the review board at the auditing firm. So...
I'm just asking, because, you know, we wanna know where we stand.
Well, I think we discussed, I think we talked about that earlier, Shirley, and, and Mr. Wallace stated that after we reviewed the audits, then we would make that decision.
I have a suggestion, if you or someone can attend the Council on Aging meeting tomorrow, when and if they distribute or, you know, give out the, but, the audit report, in case we are not to receive it the following Monday, you can bring it to us.
We will have it, I'll be there, we'll have it.
Okay, Terry says he'll get it tomorrow.
I would entertain a motion to approve, do that get it.
I would move we approve the two thousand nineteen budget, or two thou, yeah, two thousand nineteen budget as presented.
I will second, is there any further discussion?
Did we have any more questions? We didn't ask for questions?
No, all those are better to say aye.
Aye.
There's no further business during the meeting?
I do have two things. Some old business that we hadn't taken care of. Dawn, I, we had talked to Delisa's about giving us updates. I don't know, is she printing out some kind of report, or is she just still trying to get organized?
I got a couple of things, Jim. Okay, each month she's been sending me something. The first month wasn't very much because it wasn't, and then, apparently I didn't realize that she sends me a email, it's like on the final share, so her name in the email, so we need to put it in the final share. So she has sent me some more. My problem is, is she's providing patient names. So, I think I asked you guys what you were wanting to see, but I don't know, I don't remember if anybody said a really...
I think it'd just be nice to see a dollar amount, maybe, just to see, like you said, you just sent a billable for six thousand. So it might be nice to hear back of that six thousand, what are we getting? You know?
I don't think we want to see that.
No, no, not that.
I, she sent me like four different reports, and I'm, I'll be honest with you, I sent it to my computer this last time, but I don't think I've gotten anything in the month of July, I'm just trying to balance out the month of July. And maybe it was the month of July, but I'll, I'll see what the form of the recovery reports really actually are. And then, see if I can make a chunky account, which is maybe, it's just...
Okay, and then another thing, I had had a request, a phone call. We had received a letter on May twenty-first from Mary Powell, and she sent it here to the commission. And she had some requests about answers on road maintenance in her area. And she says that the road department has never responded since May twenty-first. And being that I brought up several times that we have no logging system for these types of issues and, you know, response, I think we need to follow up. So, I don't know what you want to do about this, but it is in my district, so I suppose that's why I received the phone call. But this is a letter that we received in the commission meeting, June, July, August, three months ago. I feel like that's a pretty sad turnaround time, at least to get a response. She said there was no response, not that the work hasn't been done.
I think she's wanting a response from you guys.
Whoa, it says to the commissioners, yeah. I mean, we... I mean, we, but we told the highway department that day that this, you know, and I, there's been no, they haven't gotten to us, they haven't gotten back to her. This is exactly the kind of communication error that I've been addressing, so... It basically talks about street signs at the corner of one eighty-one and Union, Eightieth and Vine, and then the bridges that are located on Orde, on, excuse me, Eightieth North of Ash Grove.
I'm gonna defend the highway department for just a minute. She came in after they had already left that day and left that letter, and I'm not sure you guys have ever given them that letter. It's potential that you did, but I know you didn't that day.
Well, we definitely discussed it, because I talked about the signs on one eighty-one. We were doing, I talked about doing signs all the way down Union and making sure the ones are on a lot of these cross-section roads, because, I mean, Michael got us a bid and got some signs up there on the lake roads. We did that. And then we did, we talked about doing, I don't know if they're done, was it fourteen we talked about?
Eighteen's done, they're doing fourteen now, I think, not like one eighty-one was there.
Separate from the state program, though?
Yes.
Okay, so...
They introduced road signs.
Because these are the road name signs.
Yeah, for our roads off of the state intersections, so...
I'm, I'm not sure that, I've never provided them a copy of that letter, so unless one of you guys gave them your letter.
I don't know that we gave them a letter. I think we discussed it, because I remember talking about the sign project, saying these more traveled roads like Union could use intersection signs, Vesper Road could use intersection signs, even on Sixth, which is south of Sylvan, that, all those signs are deteriorating too. But we haven't received any bids or anything. So, do you want a copy of this to send to them, or?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. I think that's all I have. And then, how will you...
And then, are you wanting them to respond, or are you...
Well, I think they need to come to us with what their plan is to address that.
Okay, so I'll ask them to respond to those.
Okay, we'll adjourn until Friday morning at eight o'clock.
The only reason why I know that I didn't give it to them is because she came in and asked about Michael, and I said, I don't either.
But, yeah, I don't think I handed them my copy. I don't know if she left a copy for them or not, but...
I don't know. And then I should hand it out, so...
Do you want these extra budgets? Or, I don't know, I guess we'll just...
I'll just...
Do you have them out in the court, or in the office to...
Yeah.
Give away, or?
I don't have them, I'll give them to the department. Of course, I guess you guys would need to get some of them.
Yeah, they had copies, the meeting.
Howard, I had your in the center. If I do have them.